Six o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners to order. It's May 25th, 2016. Tonight Commissioner Larry Yoder will lead us in the invocation and Vice Chairman Milton Campbell will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all would, please rise.
Let's pray. Our kindly gracious most heavenly heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that we have to come together tonight. Lord, we'd ask your blessings on this country, on the state, and on this county. Lord, we'd ask that you would be with our leaders both on the national, the state, and the local level. Be with them if they would make the decisions that benefits and takes care of the county, be with our military personnel both home and abroad, and be with our law enforcement emergency personnel who protect us each day. Lord, as we come together tonight, be with each and every one of us that we would hold conversations in sound mind, that we would hold them and remember that always in taking care of problems and dealing with issues that even though we may be on different sides and disagree with different things, that we'll always be humble and kind in the words that we say. And let us always remember that those arguments that we may have, those discussions that we may have, that everyone has the right to agree to disagree. Everyone has a right to express their opinion. Lord, we'd ask you to bless everyone that is here tonight, be with them on their way home, that you'd give them a safe journey, look after their families, take care of them, and we'd ask that you'd be with each and every one of us as we come before you tonight. And thank you for the things that you've done, and we appreciate the things that you have given us the opportunity to receive in this great world. Amen.
Stand, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where are you at, Russell?
He's out.
Is he out in the hall? Okay. All right. Well, I just didn't know if he knew all the people were out in the hall. He just announced a few minutes ago that there wasn't supposed to be a bunch of people in the hall, so that's why. The, are you good outside? I didn't know.
We moved some benches and we accommodate everyone in the hall.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Gentlemen, you got the agenda before you. Is there any additions, deletions? Changes? No? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda is presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number one on the agenda, before we go to that, I've got two young kids and they're always bringing stuff home, and I am very, very sick right now, so just bear with me if I can't talk or whatever. I'm gonna pass it over to Commissioner Campbell. The 2016-2017 Alexander County Proposed Budget, I'll call him Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The 2016-2017 budget message, the proposed budget for our Alexander County General Fund totals $38,284,170. There is no proposed tax increase, no change in fees, and no cost of living increase for county employees. The current revised 2015-2016 budget totals $38,648,095. A total of $43,608,000 was requested from county departments, the school system, and other organizations. Last year, the General Assembly approved additional sales taxes for 79 counties as part of the sales tax expansion. The effects of the sales tax expansion will begin with the 2016-2017 budget year. Alexander County's estimated revenue was $1.3 million and could only be expended in three areas, including economic development, education, and community colleges. However, Senate Bill 846 was filed two weeks ago in the legislature. This bill, if passed, would impact sales tax distributions and create uncertainty for fiscal year 2016-2017 according to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. In brief, the bill would repeal the $17.6 million state appropriation which was included as part of the last, as last year's local sales tax distribution plan was distributed to all 100 counties. The repeal would be effective July 1st, 2016. And would also change the adjustment factor applied to the half-cent sales tax and use tax levied under Article 40. And it would change the current adjustment factors as set out in the statutes. Instead, they would adjust according to the county economic tiers. The adjustment factor for Tier 1 counties would be 1.10, 1.0 for Tier 2 counties, and 0.90 for Tier 3 counties. This change would be effective July 1st, 2017. This bill is currently assigned to the Senate Finance Committee and has not yet received a hearing. A total of $1 million is budgeted in revenue designated as new sales tax. The funds are distributed in contingency and are also recommended as an increase to the Board of Education. This is the only new funding available to the Board of Education as Alexander County would receive less than 1% new growth in property tax revenue, or $203,000. Growing our tax base continues to be our number-one challenge in Alexander County. Of the $43,608,000 in budgetary requests received, capital items included in the 2016-2017 budget are as follows. $369,000 is the proposed increase for the Board of Education, making their appropriation a total of $6 million plus $150,000 for debt service on the auditorium. Alexander County has increased the Board of Education funding by $1 million since the 2012-2013 budget year. $235,000 is capital outlay for four vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. $54,840 for a replacement inmate transport vehicle to replace a 2,000 Dodge van that has 163,000 miles. $131,404 for four EMT paramedic positions to work a 12-hour rotation schedule. $145,000 for a new Type 3 ambulance to replace a 2,008 ambulance with over 200,000 miles. $50,000 for new EMS protective gear, turnout gear, to replace out-of-date turnout gear that is more than 10 years old and does not meet OSHA standards. $25,000 for an impact ventilator in EMS to replace an older unit that is over seven years old. $55,000 for a new telephone system for DSS to replace the current system that can no longer handle the volume incoming outgoing calls. The current system goes down in the middle of calls and must be rebooted repeatedly. And of this $55,000, $37,521 is actually paid out of General Fund, the rest is paid by the state. $39,867 for a new animal services truck to replace the current truck that badly needs repairs and has over 171,000 miles. The cost includes a bed mount unit totally enclosed for full size, and this bed mount would allow for the safer transport of larger animals. Three additional employees are being recommended, including one building inspector transitioning a part-time EMS administrative position to full-time effective January of 2017, and one additional staff person at Rocky Face Park needed due to a new community building to be constructed in Phase 2 this summer. The position is starting in October 2016. Please note, there are several departmental concern issues that are currently being discussed with DSS and the Senior Center. There are a number of projects that will begin or be completed in the 2016-2017 budget year, including the CBCC Alexander Applied Technology Center, Rocky Face Park Phase 2, the Sure Tape Sewer Project, Taylor Togs Building which will house EDC workforce development and the conference room, and also the former Energy United Water Corporation property that was transferred, recently transferred to Alexander County. That building will be used for community uses and also has some present uses, and those will be included also. Water rates will be, are being recommended to be changed from the current rate structure to the outside City of Hickory rates. Staff is currently working on a water tap incentive for the upcoming budget year, and we'll have something to announce when we do our budget. The public hearing for the 2016-2017 proposed budget is scheduled for June 6th, 2016. Commissioners, it's here in the Commissioners' Meeting Room at 6:00 PM in Room 103 at CBCC Alexander Center. There are a couple items else to mention about the budget. One is that there's revenue included in the budget from the town of Taylorsville to, for an agreement with the county, that the county will start providing planning and zoning services in July. The agreement is currently under review, and it'll be in front of the Commissioners at the next meeting. There are also three items that have been discussed or are being discussed, and those, this money is not in the budget yet, but could be, or could be added later with a budget amendment. There's a request from Park Place Humanity that's currently under review. There's ARC, there's a broadband feasibility study that's under review, and there's been some discussion about road assessment program, and that would have to be addressed at a later time. And that's the 2016-2017 budget message. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody have any question?
One comment. We met this weekend in the Budget Committee, and we discussed maybe increasing that allocation of schools, make it even $400,000. And I think last year, when we were looking at the budget, I think the comment was made by several of us that we would not vote for a budget at a higher amount than what we approved last year. I'm glad to say we're right at that number, a little bit under it. Just want to make sure we stay at it or under it. Another comment in regards to the replacement of the sheriff's vehicles, I think I've been very passionate about that, that we need to do that every single year so that all that fleet doesn't age out at the same time. And, you know, we let the sheriff, it's totally his discretion on what he decides to purchase, that's not our business. He's the professional law enforcement person, not us. And also, this ambulance was in very bad need of replacement as well. So I think those are some positives. Biggest positive is not gonna have a tax increase for this budget.
Absolutely. Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to add in there that Commissioner Campbell and I had spoken about the adding, making it $400,000 for the school system, and we feel like that's a good number to give them this year based on the conditions and what they had asked for, and felt real good about that. The other thing is, you know, for years, we always, and I'm agreeing with Mr. Campbell on this, because for years we'd tried to give the Sheriff's Department four new vehicles each year. When the economy went south, we just had to stop and do what we had to do. And so them replacing their cars every four years is a very good thing. And our ambulances, I think about two years ago, maybe three years ago, we had decided that we'd try to replace an ambulance every year due to the fact that we didn't have a hospital. And the animal control vehicle, that thing has to meet certain state standards now. Maybe folks don't know, but it has to be heated, or it has to be in air conditioning, and has to be able to maintain a certain climate for the animals, and that's something that we have to make sure that we take care of. So all in all, I think everything looks good on the budget. Like we talked about, we wanted to make sure that there was no tax increase. We didn't want to see any tax increase, and we wanted to try to remain and keep the budget at or below what it was last year. So I think overall that the Finance Committee meeting together and working on these things has come up with a good plan.
One more update in regard to the school funding. This would be funding for operating expenses, not for the capital improvements that they had indicated for the Taylorsville. We've discussed with the school board potential debt-type arrangement for that. So this, I believe the Talsville School, if it were to be closed, they were having a savings of $540,000. So this $400,000 gets a long way to mitigate that $540,000. So I think that's important that we note that.
Absolutely.
And also, I spoke with Chairperson Briskie yesterday. We reviewed a funding agreement that another county has utilized between the school system and the Board of Commissioners, and we're, conceptually, we think that's a good idea so that we're constantly, when it gets to budget time, we kind of know where everybody's gonna land before you get there. Now, obviously, we've got a lot of work to do on that to see if we can get there. We may not get there, but I think, conceptually, the school board, or at least the chairperson, and I think we agree that that would be a good way to move forward. So, and we're gonna meet quarterly, so hopefully we can vet that out during those quarterly meetings.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, you're like dressed, I think, you know, they've done a good job Larry, Milton doing the finance here. You know, just so everybody knows, there was, we all got books for request, and gosh, those things weigh almost 50 pounds, you know, every department wanting, you know, more things, and, you know, we'd love to fund everything, but you gotta have, you know, the money, and it's, you know, all of the citizens' money. And just trying to do it as wisely as we can, and I think, you know, it looks, you know, pretty good, everything I'm seeing so far. So this is just kind of contingent till we meet to adopt everything.
And, Mr. Chairman, one other thing here. When Mr. French was talking about Senate Bill 846, and the way that they're going to apply the half-cent sales tax, the adjustment factor, everyone needs to understand that Alexander County is a Tier 2. So anything that would happen there would be under the 1% for Tier 2 counties. So we would see a decrease in our sales tax based on what they're saying at this time because of the adjustment factor. So we need to pay real close attention to Senate Bill 846, and we need to make sure that we talk to our representatives and make sure that we request from them that they do not, really, if they wouldn't mess with our sales tax on that particular bill, we'd be in better shape financially as far as sales tax is concerned than we will be if they mess with it, because we need that revenue. And there's been some discussion about this special tax that was passed anyway. We are not receiving that money at this time, even though it had gone into effect, we will not receive that money. It's usually, our sales tax runs three months behind, so I want everybody to understand that money is not coming in yet, and probably will not be coming in until probably another couple of months, I'd say. Correct, Mr. French?
Yes, sir.
Probably be at least two more months?
Part of it will come in July, and the other part we should receive in October.
Right. So that's not something, the revenue that we have at this time, so we can't count on it until we've actually started receiving it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one thing I'd like to say to everybody that's here, as well as maybe listening on the radio, or watch us later on YouTube, or one of the other means of being entertained by our meetings. One thing a lot of people don't understand, and a lot of you may know this, but the Alexander County, you know, Board of Commissioners and/or the Alexander County Government has one source of revenue that we have control over, and that one single source is property tax. We have, we don't have the authority or power to generate funds from any other source, That being said, we take it very seriously in how we look at spending the property owners' in Alexander County's money. Everybody sitting behind this bench is a property owner in Alexander County, just like most, if not every, single one of you. Another, just real brief thing, I would say, county budget is, and I am not, I am not a CPA by any stretch. Accounting was probably my least favorite two classes I had to take in college. But this is, you know, this is the proposed budget, and our budget information is open to anyone that would like to see it. Now, I'm not sure you want to wade through it, but anybody that's interested in where your money's going, you are more than welcome to a copy. I think in the past, there may have been as many as a handful that go out each year. You know, and we're charged with spending $38 million, most of which is your money and my money, and, well, it's the other property owners in Alexander County's money. And if you would be interested in how it, where it goes and how it's spent, you're welcome to see where every penny goes, because by law, it's yours to see. And we would love to see the citizen, you know, the citizenry, which, that might not be a word, but we'd love to see the citizens of Alexander County, we'd love to see you more involved. We've had a couple, what's the word, I guess you say, exciting topics on our agenda in the past however many months. You know, we've had a packed, this is our second packed house in, what, two, three Normally, at our meetings, there are 15 people in here. To me, and I may be stepping on toes, but to me, as a citizen, as a property owner, as a person that pays property tax, you're welcome. You're always welcome. Our meetings are required to be open. They're required to be publicly advertised. We can put 124 people in here every single meeting. This is our third one this month. I don't know how many this is this year, but, you know, you don't have to wait. You don't have to wait until you're upset to come see us.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyle. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if someone does want to see a copy of the budget, the 2016-2017 budget request, or the 2016-2017 proposed budget, there's a copy on file at the Clerk's Office in the County Administration Building, and it's there during office hours for anyone to come and view if they, and they're welcome to come look at it.
Is the proposed budget on the website?
No, it's not.
Okay. All right. Now, folks, and I told you I feel really bad, and I forgot something that I meant to do during the adoption of the agenda. Once a month, we have a public comment, and we only have it once a month, but since this is a special situation, I'm gonna ask that we amend our agenda and put public comment on, and we're gonna stick to, you know, the rules that we have, but I'm gonna make that in form of a motion that we add a public comment to this particular meeting.
Sir.
Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, motion passes. All right, we're gonna have public comment.
And you're gonna have that after we finish what we're discussing here?
I'm gonna do it right now.
Okay.
We're moving on. So let me read the rules here. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comments should call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. So we've got three minutes per speaker. Our first speaker is Mr. Steve Dagenhart. If you would, come on up. And I will give you a signal at 30 seconds and 10 seconds, and then...
Thank you. Brother Hank Little used to say, "Every good message ought to be short, and every bad message ought to be shorter." So I believe in that. I'll have to leave as soon as I'm through. We have Bible school, I have to preach to our teenagers tonight. But I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak publicly about the issue of alcohol in our county. According to the Scriptures, I am instructed and admonished to pray for those who sit in governmental positions, and I pray that your decisions that you make about our economy and our law enforcement and our schools will be made founded upon the principles of the Word of the Lord. I speak to you tonight as a lifelong resident of Alexander County. I was born and raised in the town of Taylorsville on March 12th, 1955. I attended Poplar Springs Baptist Church all of my growing-up years, was saved there, called to preach, and attended and graduated ACHS in 1973. The Lord has honored me to be a pastor in my hometown for nearly 42 years, pastoring two churches. And He's been good to me and mine, married my high school girlfriend, we have three children, and they are residents of Alexander County, all three, have five precious grandchildren. And I'm not speaking tonight as somebody that's just passing through. I've been here all my life. I'm a resident here, just like you are. I live here. I love this place. And I won't say, though I have been privileged to preach in my pulpit to my people every Sunday, I have never stood in this forum before in my life. This is the first time. And I come tonight as a concerned pastor, a concerned parent, and grandparent, and citizen of this county. I feel that a sense of urgency to speak to you about the matter of alcohol and its sales. Our county has spoken with a loud voice over the past two elec...
Mr. Dagenhart, 30 seconds.
Thank you. Two elections about alcohol. And if you're considering passing a referendum tonight to allow this, I'll give you another option. Tell them who support it, go out and gather the necessary signatures, just like we did in the '70s when we tried to vote out the ABC store. That's what we were told. And I would say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Is that done?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I'll not waste your time with introductions. Another episode of lack of communication between government, and has brought us here again tonight. We did not find out about this meeting till yesterday at 11:30 in a press release, and it has saddened the majority of us, 30-some churches that I represent. And we've come tonight representing them in a voice against alcohol. You were placed, if I'm not mistaken, you were placed in the chairs that you sit at now by the people of Alexander County. Not only by the people, but for the people. And I hope you will consider the values of these beloved citizens that you represent. I hope you will not cave to the pressures of a few special interest groups that's disguised as progressives. I still am under the belief system that we are under the majority rules, if I'm correct. And the majority has spoken twice on this issue. I call to your remembrance the decision by the people that defeated the past alcohol referendum, and we did it twice. referendum, and we did it twice, on the city and on a county-wide scale, including this last election that defeated a countywide referendum with a fifty-two-point-five percent vote that took place on March nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, almost three years ago. We were not made aware of this meeting, and it had caught us off guard, and sorry for that. But we cannot help you, the faith community, the churches we represent. We cannot help you if we are left out in the cold by not knowing what's going on in our county. I, for one, cannot explain this Messiah complex that this alcohol referendum has took on, like it's going to save our county, what it's going to do. I, there's a lot of statistics I have, and for every one dollar of tax revenue that we take in on this, it will expend somewhere in the amount of twenty-one dollars and forty-two cent to bring that money back in to cover for all of these alcohol-related incidents that we may have. I do want to say this to you in closing.
Thirty seconds.
Mr. Yoder, Mr. Mayberry, about three years ago, maybe three and a half years ago, we were in a meeting just like this, and I was in present. And you made the statement that let the people vote about the marriage amendment. Let the people vote, and you have done that. And we did. And we, and we again say this to you, let the people vote. In closing, I say this to you. I realize that there are some men here that ordain deacons. I want to read a little something to you.
Time's up.
As a...
Sorry. Thank you. Next is Gary Jennings. Are you here, Mr. Jennings?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Twenty thirteen, the decisive decision was made in the alcohol referendum that took place at that time in a fifty-two-point-five percent margin of vote against forty-seven-point-five percent margin of vote to turn down the alcohol referendum. In any election, that kind of spread would have been considered a very, very deep spread between the two factions. I have even heard it called a landslide-type victory in presidential elections. Only three precincts out of the sixteen that voted in that referendum voted for the alcohol referendum, Bethlehem One, Two, and Wittenburg. That was eighteen-point-seventy-five percent of the voters in Alexander County represented those three precincts. Out of those three precincts, you have to realize that only thirteen-point-forty-six percent of those precincts bothered to go to the polls and even vote in that referendum, which was a little bit over one-third of those that were registered to vote. I would remind you that it takes a thirty-five percent petition in North Carolina to bring a referendum back before the people. If they got every voter, every voter in those three precincts, they would still be five percent short of that referendum, and they realize that. Now going on, we have to realize that any legislative in-run around the referendum that we've already had, or the referendum that might be proposed, will be taking the voice of the people away from them. You're taking the majority voice away from the people of Alexander County. A minority of the voters are deciding on a very costly prospect for the county. When you begin to boil this all down, you begin to realize that the minority, in this case, is trying to get a majority decision made, not on the backs of the people, but on your back. Let the majority of the people speak again. In every discussion I've been a part of since the referendum in thirteen, we have all agreed that if a thirty-five percent petition was brought back to the county, so be it. We would face that again in the future when the time came. Here's what you have to decide. Are you going to tell the voters of Alexander County that your voice doesn't matter? You might as well tell the Dyer students. When we tell them, "Just say no to drugs," forget that, because you're sending a terrible mixed message to these young people in Alexander County by putting drugs and alcohol back before our society. There is a drug problem in Alexander County. Alcohol is a drug, and we all know that. Tell industry, tell industry why we can't provide a workforce that can pass a drug test in Alexander County to support industry coming into this county. I would, I would simply ask you to do this, on a professional, or personal, or pastoral, or as a representative of the people, just give the people their voice back and let them decide, and let the proponents of the alcohol referendums bring back by petition the thirty-five percent that's needed to do that. Now I think that Senator Wells' phone has blown up in Raleigh today.
Time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next is Tim Wilson. Is Mr. Wilson here? Yeah.
Feel like I'm in court a little bit, but I'm going to do the best I can. I'm Tim Wilson. I'm with Lowe's Foods. Just briefly, I want to tell you, I was a store manager at the Bethlehem store. I'm now up the road at a, at the other store, Bell Hollow, the edge of Hickory. But I, I just wanted to bring a different perspective from a merchant point of view. Having been in both places, I was in the Bethlehem store three and a half years. I've been where I'm at now about two and a half years. But I've seen the, the positive impact that can happen on folks shopping in their own community. And I'm going to come back to what I started out by saying, where I worked at, where I'm at now. You know, people normally shop where they live. Also, allowing the sale of alcohol in, in your stores would basically, you know, increase sales in that particular store and the basket size. I can give you the example of the store when I was in Bethlehem, of the store I'm at now. Our basket size is about twenty-three percent higher. Also, it'll increase sales in other areas of the store. You also have vendors that want to do business with you, and there again, I'm reflecting back to working in both locations. People stay in their community shop. It'll increase traffic for all businesses. It'll even bring, in my opinion, businesses that don't even sell alcohol. And I've seen that, I grew up in the big town of Granite Falls. That's all I'll say. I've seen what's happened there when that, when that came into that community. Also, yes, it will increase sales in the store. I'll admit that. Yes, it will. But it'll also bring more hours to the store. We're based on a budget. That means more job opportunity, more hours added. And I'm going to go back again. It'll bring more vendors into that, that community and that want to do business with us. I think two big misconceptions, and I got to bring this up. I've been a store manager for probably thirty-two years. The riffraff that you think is going to happen does not happen in every store I've been in, and I can name you all those locations. Also, I've got to, I've got to wrap up and say this. I can look around the room, and remember, I'm in the city of Hickory now, working. A lot of the folks in this room come in my store and buy their alcohol. I mean, that's, that's really, to me, the most important thing I would tell you today. And when I say that, on a serious note, it's not just that. You know, they come in and buy their whole order, and I don't, maybe that sounded bad by saying it that way, but what I'm getting at is, I worked in the Bethlehem store three and a half years, I'm where I'm at now. Those guests that were in that store are coming in the store I'm at now, buying their entire shopping order.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. But to me, the opportunity, even for our company, you know, I'm, I'm a store manager. I'm speaking from just the two locations I worked at, but I know what the potential even for our company would be there if that passed, and the things, the extra amenities they could add, and, and the things they could do to that location to drive sales and drive business and bring more vendors and more, really selections for the guests that live in that area.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Next is, and our last speaker will be Glenn Mays.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Darnes, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to this issue tonight. Unfortunately, the issue of alcohol sales is an emotional one rather than a rational one. I want to look at it from a rational point of view. First, what are the people of Alexander County missing? Alexander County is one of only two counties in North, of North Carolina's one hundred counties, which does not have countywide alcohol sales. When it was approved in ninety-eight other counties, the sun... When the, when the sun, when the, when it was approved in ninety-eight other counties, the sun rose the next day, the earth continued to spin, and the world did not end. In fact, some very good things happened. Sales tax revenues increased, economic development improved, and more businesses, with more businesses opening, and downtowns were rejuvenated. And contrary to what many folks will try to tell you, even DWI's decreased in many cases. By the year two thousand, most North Carolina counties and municipalities had approved the legal sale of alcohol. Let's see what happened since then. In two thousand, there were thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-four alcohol-related vehicle crashes in North Carolina. In two thousand fourteen, that's the latest, the latest year for which data is available, there were ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-one. That's a decrease of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-three. Alexander County is the driest county, shall we say, of the counties of Alexander, Catawba, Caldwell, Burke, Wilkes, and Iredell. Of those, Alexander has the highest percentage of alcohol-related accidents. Second, let's look at sales tax revenue. For quite some time, we have seen Alexander County's sales tax revenue decrease on a month-to-month basis. It's only been in the past year or so that it has ticked up slightly, ironically coinciding with the approval of alcohol sales at Brushy Mountain and Old Steel Golf Courses. A report several months ago of a study that was done on consumer spending in the uniform counties showed that Alexander County lost more than a hundred and forty-seven million dollars in retail spending in two thousand fourteen to neighboring counties.
Thirty seconds.
That figure included more than, than fifty-one million dollars from food and beverage stores and restaurants. Just two years earlier, in two thousand twelve, Alexander County lost a hundred and thirty million. So it's wrong, the trend is in the wrong direction. What about excise tax on alcohol? That's distributed on a population basis to counties and municipalities that have approved the sale of alcohol. Just considering beer and wine sales.
Thank you.
In two thousand fourteen, Taylorsville received ten thousand eighty-two dollars in excise tax.
Time's up.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. You may have not heard me. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you all for being very orderly. I'm going to try to read this. I have a terrible sore throat. Oh, we need to go on to number two. I'm sorry. Going on to item number two, resolution for special alcohol election. I will read this resolution. I'm sorry, what? Do you have that information? Does Chad have that?
Slides.
The slides? You got those slides?
Yeah.
Okay. So here is, these are the voting districts. And...
It's township and voting district.
Yeah, these are towns, but these, okay, these are township and voting districts. But there's no Bethlehem township, so Bethlehem is inside the Wittenburg Township, correct? All right. Yeah, there's no Bethlehem Township. So there's a Wittenburg Township that includes Bethlehem One and Two. So these are voting districts and townships. Go ahead, Joshua. Say something.
No, no.
Oh, okay. So these are all the different townships. Do you have any other slides, Chad? Okay. Guys, I can't talk, so somebody else is going to have to talk. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I'll go ahead. This was in reference to what is the referendum. It would be in regards to the Wittenburg Township, which was Wittenburg, Bethlehem One and Two. And these were the results of the two thousand thirteen in those, those areas. So you can see Bethlehem One and Two, and then Wittenburg at the bottom. Bethlehem One and Two are first in what the vote was.
Josh, were you going to say something about that?
About percentages.
Do you have the percentages on there? You got another slide? Didn't run the percentages. Okay, they didn't run the percentages, but roughly it's sixty to sixty-six percent, depending on what you look at, four in those three, three voting districts, which basically makes up the Wittenburg Township. So what this came about from was we were approached by several of the citizens in, in that area, and they wanted us to look into township voting, because there are townships in North Carolina that have their ABC referendums. And I'm going off memory. I wish I would have remembered to bring the information, but I think there's thirty-two townships in North Carolina that have had ABC referendums in one, one fashion or another. So the ABC laws in North Carolina are very, very confusing. They're very convoluted, and they're antiquated, but nobody has the, really the political will to update them. They just kind of want to kick the can down the road. So it creates a lot of confusing situations. And so one of those situations came about when we were approached by these residents asking us, you know, is township elections, are they able to be held in Alexander County? So we solicited, you know, advice from the North Carolina School of Government, the ABC Commission, some other state agencies, and you get conflicting advice depending on who you talk to. So it's not very clear. One, one said yes, one said no, one said maybe, but then if it goes to court, then it'd probably be overturned. So there's a lot of different things out there. And, yeah, I apologize. I feel really bad, but what, what I'll, you know, in, in our opinion, looking at this, is that we could, you know, potentially call for township election, because first of all, the, the voters in those areas said, yes, we want to have that available. But if we were to call for that township election, it may have passed with no problems, but then it'd just take a court case to stop everything. And then that would probably end up in front of the North Carolina Supreme Court to be decided, because as I said, the laws are very complex, confusing, and convoluted. So it would be up to the Supreme Court to decide that. So what we would like to do is ask the General Assembly to clarify, you know, that Bethlehem is actually, or Wittenburg is actually a township that is eligible to have an ABC referendum. So, guys, anybody?
So for, for clarification, this would only affect the Wittenburg Township, which is made up of Bethlehem and a portion of Wittenburg. And when I say a portion of Wittenburg, what I understand from the, from the maps, there, there's, there are township maps, there are voting district maps, and there are, excuse me, voting district maps, school district maps, and fire district maps, and they are all different. But this would be based on township, the township map, which is based on the two thousand, the year two thousand Tiger something Census that the federal government does, or that's what I've been told and what I think we understand. And this would not have any direct effect on any other part of Alexander County.
Do you guys want me to read? Do you guys want me to read this? Let me read it.
Read it.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and read this. "A resolution to request assistance from the North Carolina General Assembly regarding a township election. Whereas the citizens of the Wittenburg Township, which is generally comprised of the Bethlehem and Wittenburg voting districts, voted overwhelmingly during the March 2013 countywide ABC referendum in support of the citizens of Alexander County having the right of purchasing alcohol within the borders of Alexander County. And whereas the citizens of the Wittenburg Township also voted overwhelmingly in support of their tax dollars remaining in Alexander County instead of being used to fund the budgets of other nearby counties. And whereas the citizens that live close to the borders of Alexander County must either drive to the town of Taylorsville or to another county to buy alcohol. And whereas after a lengthy investigation of township elections and conflicting advice received from the North Carolina ABC Commission, the North Carolina School of Government, as well as other state agencies, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners is requesting assistance from the North Carolina General Assembly to determine the possibility of a township election in the precincts comprising of the Wittenburg Township alone. And whereas the other townships in Alexander County voted in opposition to alcohol sales in their areas during the March 2013 countywide ABC referendum. And whereas a township... Whereas a township election specifically in the Wittenburg Township would allow those citizens who wish to have alcohol, alcohol sales in their area and who voted in favor during the March 2013 countywide ABC referendum, a right to another vote while also keeping other areas of the county whose citizens opposed, whose citizens are opposed to, remain dry. And whereas approval of a township election would result in job creation as well as new businesses and restaurants locating within the Wittenburg Township, which will also stimulate the local economy and generate much-needed sales tax revenue. And whereas all of Alexander County will benefit from the increased sales tax revenues generated. And whereas every dollar in sales tax revenue generated will offset a dollar in property tax revenues needed to balance the Alexander County budget. And whereas sales tax dollars generated will also aid in funding the needs of the Alexander County school system. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby request the North Carolina General Assembly pass legislation to clarify existing laws and give the Wittenburg Township alone the right to hold an ABC referendum in the precinct comprising of the Wittenburg Township only." That's it. Okay. Is there any? Anybody have any other comments?
I would make...
Oh, excuse me, sir. Go ahead.
One comment. In regard to scheduling this meeting, there were some questions of why it was on a Wednesday. If any of you would go back and watch the meeting earlier in the month, that was because of me. The company I work for is based in Virginia, and I had to be there Monday and Tuesday. Therefore, I did not think I would make the meeting and I wanted to be at the meeting. So if, uh, you can certainly go back and watch that and we'll find out that's why. And I have to go once a month, every month, and that is not a choice.
Yeah, and it was, uh, made out that we were trying to hide things and that we, uh, didn't announce this beforehand. We announced it like we do every other single item on every agenda. Uh, we didn't change anything. We have done nothing, uh, to try to be underhanded, as some people have suggested. That's absolutely not true, so. Anybody else?
Uh, only I'd say, Mr. Chairman, in looking at this, uh, of all the folks that I have heard from, and trust me, folks, you may not gotten an email back from me, but I got every single one of these emails. Every single one of them. And, uh, all the folks that told me that they were against alcohol, the 99% of those folks live in the other townships. I'm sitting here tonight telling you that, I'm, I'm just tell, I'm just, let me explain myself, okay? I mean, I sat here and listened to you talk, let me explain myself, okay? Number one, I said that I would not support another referendum in a countywide vote unless it came by the 35% voters that said that they would, uh, do a petition. I did say that. And for a countywide vote, I stand by that because I said it. Reverend Chapman is correct. But here's the thing. All these other folks in this county, they don't want alcohol. It's the Bethlehem community that wants to see their community grow and prosper in a different way than some of the rest of us would want to to go. And whether we like, like it or not, each community tries to do their own thing. All communities don't do things alike. They all have different things that, uh, they stress more than others. Uh, I think it's only right to ask the General Assembly to, uh, give the folks in the Bethlehem community, if they say it's proper to do so, then let them decide. Let them fight their own battle. And let them do it. And, uh, you know, I support the things that all of you said, and all of you sent these things, and, you know, you said that you were praying for us and that, and you talked about, uh, Jesus Christ, and you talked about God and everyone. Tell you something, I am a Christian and I'm proud of the God that I serve. Always have been, always will be. I've made mistakes in my life, and those mistakes that I've made whenever I meet my Lord and Savior, I assure you that he'll pass judgment on me. I don't need other folks passing judgment on me. I'm a big boy. And those things that I do, Jesus Christ, when I go through the pearly gates, he'll make his judgment on me. I don't have a problem with that. So the thing that I'm trying to say here tonight is, let those folks make the decisions that they wanna make. Let's see what the General Assembly says. There's no guarantee that this thing's going to pass, but there's no way that there'll be an alcohol referendum called here unless you folks knew about it upfront. This is just a resolution asking for clarification and to make a, make a judgment and make a decision on something that's not very, not clarified the way it is. And the other thing is that I don't see anything wrong where we have people selling beer and wine and the city limits and those places that have been annexed by the city of Taylorsville so that they can sell alcohol. That's why they were annexed. That's why they did the special annexation. It's what they did it for. They really did. I mean, you go back and look, and I think everyone over in here know that. But let's put, and let's have the opportunity and give the people in the Bethlehem and the Wittenburg community, let's give them the same opportunity that Walmart, Food Line, our little convenience stores have. Why should they not have the same opportunity to sell the product that they'd like to sell, the same as everybody else in the county? Why should they not have that same opportunity? You know, I mean, you know, you go in the store, you buy what you want to. You support the places you wanna eat when you wanna eat. And that's fine, well and good. But I think that this is something that the General Assembly needs to make a decision on, give us an answer on, and then we'll proceed from there. Mr. Chairman, I thank you for letting me make my comments.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I hear a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the special alcohol election.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sir, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those oppose, motion passes four to one. Okay, thank you. All right, now, item number three is, uh, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 38 and 39, and Project Budget Ordinance Amendment, Ordinance Number P2. If you, if you're gonna leave, would you guys please exit out the back or middle? Thank you. Calling Rick French, County Manager. Do you wanna wait just a second? Can I say we appreciate your interest in everything else?
As I say, did we finish talking about budget? I'm just better at this.
Yeah.
They won't, yeah, we had to start on budget, man. We gotta start on budget.
He's talking about the budget.
No, budget, budget. Yeah. There.
Did we finish that?
Do we have one?
Well, I mean, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, we want him to increase the school budget by 4,000. Did we not have to approve that, or did we just make that suggestion tonight?
We just make the suggestion.
Okay, that's why, I thought make sure was cool. I just wanted to make sure it was good on that.
We can add that.
Yes, I just wanted, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was in the same, same apartment with.
It'll be the same number, 'cause we can take it, we'll take it different from out of contingency.
Sounds good, sounds good.
Uh, Budget Amendment Number 38 is to increase the DSS budget for fiscal year 2016 funding received to provide transportation for the elderly, to get to nutrition sites, doctor appointments, adult daycare, and other transportation needs, to increase the senior center budget for additional fiscal year 2016 grant funds from home and community, uh, care block grants, HCC VG for older adults. These funds will be used to purchase chairs for the senior center. Budget Amendment Number 39 is to budget for transfer funds from the jail project fund, uh, to the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget. The transfer will use money from the 2011 jail, uh, loan proceeds for the 2000, fiscal year 2017 interest payments on the debt. Uh, the budget ordinance, I mean, the ordinance that you have is the Alexander County Project Budget Ordinance for the Appalachian Regional Commission Applied Technologies Building Equipment Project. The project authorized is the AR, called ARC funding to equip classrooms for advanced manufacturing training and upholstery and other related training as described in the work statement that's contained in the ARC grant. The Appalachian Regional Commission Applied Technologies Building Equipment Project, uh, it's $100,000 and it's matched with, uh, $100,000 of Alexander County local funds. And this $200,000 is for equipment, uh, only. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about those three, those two budget amendments and the project amendment.
Any other questions?
Mr. Manager, is the, uh, on number 39, the courthouse renovations, was there money that was already allotted from last year? Did we have money in there for that, or is this totally brand new?
No, it's not. This, uh, it's from the proceeds, it's been there. It's been there. It's not, it's not, it's not.
I'll make a motion, we accept the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those oppose, motion carries unanimously. What about the, uh, project budget ordinance? We'll need to vote on that separately.
Yes, yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the project budget as stated, uh, on the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those oppose, motion carries unanimously. Item number four on the agenda is the County Town of Taylorsville Agreement to Bill and Collect Taxes. Call on Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your package, you have a copy of the agreement between the Alexander County and Town of Taylorsville. Since, uh, April of 2010, the county has been providing that service to the town for a sum of 3% of the total taxes collected. And this agreement is to extend that agreement for four more years, beginning July 1st, 2016. And it's pretty self-explanatory, but I'll be glad to try to answer questions if you have questions, questions about the agreement. But it just allows the county the opportunity to collect taxes for the town, and we get 3%.
Is 3%, what's that dollar amount? I'm just curious.
I'll get, I'll get that.
That's the same question you got?
Pretty much.
So obviously, I say as a full-time employee and just wanna make sure.
I'll get the dollar number and get it for now.
Uh, is, is there any changes from the last agreement at all?
The same. Mr. French, one question I would have is, you know, shows a rate, like, say, the rate of 3%. Basically, uh, handling fee, processing fee, whatever.
Yes, sir.
How long have we had that, that rate, that same rate agreed to?
Time, this whole time.
Okay, so how far back?
2010.
Mm-hmm.
Is 3% an amount where the county is not supplementing, um, the, supplementing the town by providing an underpriced service?
No, sir, I don't believe we are, because we're sending out the bills anyway, so it's just included with the bills. So it's not done separately.
Is that, I mean, you know, reason, I mean, all I'm asking is, I wanna make sure that we're covering our expense.
I believe we are.
To do, to do that. I mean, we like to be nice and all, but...
Right, I understand.
I don't see any reason in, I don't see any reason in spending county money to, to, uh...
Do we have that dollar amount?
Yeah.
All right, is there a motion?
How long, wait, one...
Is this for a year?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years.
Four years. So we will be eight years into it and... I'll say, with normal inflation, I would assume at the end of this contract, we may need to look, we may need to relook at our 3% charge.
Yes, sir.
But that's just my opinion.
Yes, sir.
Something like that. It might be high. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreement as is.
Is there a second? I'll second, it was the caveat that we make sure we revisit this on, at the end of four years. Oh, yeah.
Or whatever board is here at that time.
That's right. Whomever's here. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hands. Motion passes unanimously. Item number five on the agenda, uh, other business, calling Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, in your packets, you have some information from the School of Government concerning the special assessment for unpaved roads. We'd had a, uh, citizen approach the board, um, a couple meetings ago and ask about it. Uh, and you have that information, uh, just in a real general way, uh, the way this works is, the, uh, process is used only to bring roads to NC DOT standards. Um, you have to have petition for 75% of the, the property owners along the, uh, right-of-way. You have to have right-of-way, it has all meet DOT standards. The county would have to pay the cost of paving the road upfront, and then be it, the citizens would be assessed and could be assessed up to 10 years. Um, it's a very expensive process, and it can't be used for anything else but to bring the roads up to DOT standards. There's one county in North Carolina that does this, and it's Gaston County, and they've done this on four roads. Um, no other counties do this. So I just wanted to, and you have the information in your packet.
Uh, Mr. French, could you, um, could you incur, you know, pay this? Well, say, say there was a, a road out there that we, uh, did the improvements on. Could you then incur a debt, uh, and have the, the special assessment taxes, the collateral, or whatever you would wanna call it? That way, the county wouldn't have, say, it costs a million dollars to do that particular road. You could borrow that money after the fact, put it back into the general fund, and then the assessment would be paying on the debt on that. That way, the general fund wouldn't be down the money.
I, I don't know if you can do it that way or not. The, the statute only is, really is, to me, addresses this, the assessment process as far as you work with DOT and the road is brought, whatever, you know, the road is brought to DOT standards because the idea is, once a road is paved, DOT would take the road over because we're not in the, in the maintenance bu, business. So if it costs a million dollars... So if it costs a million dollars or whatever it would cost to do that, the county would have to pay that cost up front and then assess the property owners along those rights away. The, there's, in Gaston, I think they actually charged the property owners up like a five hundred dollar fee to sort of start the process.
Yeah.
They only have done four roads primarily because it's so expensive for them.
It, oh, well, and we'll get into the details.
But if you do this though, Mr. Chairman, Mr. French, you correct me if I'm wrong. All this money has to be paid up front.
That's correct.
Based on our, our, our revenues. And, I mean, you'd, you'd say major tax increase in order to support this program, would you not?
No.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think you need a tax increase, but I think you'd actually have to have, I don't think you could do just one road. I think you, once you start, there's a lot of unpaved roads in the county and we get, we get call, phone calls. I'll know of all you do about people that are interested in getting their roads paved. And of course, we tell them we're not in that business.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Instead of taking working capital out of our general fund, can we not figure out a way to borrow against that? We'll talk about that at a later time, but anyway, I, this would be a very good thing if it were able to be done in a certain way.
I understand.
And, and I know that, you know, the thing that I want to add here is this. Three years ago, the state of North Carolina was wanting counties to take over highways and take over streets and roads. And I think this is an avenue opened up that can of worms again. And, I mean, I'm, I'm going to tell you now, fast, quick, I am totally against this. I know the general statute says you can do it and I love helping people. I love to help them fix the roads. But hey, you know, Alexander County's not in the road business and we don't need to get in the road business because I'm telling you, if you start this program, you're going to end up, the state will see you doing it and the state will come in and say, hey, if you can do that, you can do that on all the roads. Those folks scared me to death. And trust me, they almost put that to the counties and the association fought that tooth and nail over the last two or three years down there in Raleigh so that we wouldn't have to take over roads because we were looking at that time at a flat twelve, twelve cent or maybe eighteen cent tax increase just to take care of the roads based on what the association had said. So, you know, that's a, that's a bad precedent to get started in. I'd be totally against that, this issue.
Well, a lot of people like where us to fix sixty-four ninety.
They'd love where us to fix that road.
It's not upstate specs.
It's still even up to standard.
Well, one, just one quick comment. My, my only concern is there are way too many roads out there that people live on them would love to have repaired. One of the first things I was asked after elected was about, was about a road that, I mean, and it's not just, you know, it's not a big, it's not an old country road. This is a neighborhood street that has, you know, that's maybe a thousand feet, you know, a thousand feet long and has eight, eight houses on it. And, you know, my thing is where, how do you choose which ones to do? How, I mean, to me, it's, it's just, it's really opening up a possible, I mean, it's opening up a.
Yeah, but you know as well as I do, all the problems out there with.
Oh, and I, no, I do. I, I fully understand the problems with non-state maintained roads due to government, I'll say, with mortgages, FHA, VA, USDA. Actually, to get one of those mortgages these days, you have to live on a state maintained road or have a written and recorded road maintenance agreement. Which most, which most, most roads that are not state maintained do not have written and recorded road maintenance agreements. And if you go knock on all your neighbors' doors and ask them to say, to, to agree to pay whatever it costs to keep that road up from now to the end of time, they're going to slam the door in your face real quick because I've actually tried to do it to get some property to sell before. And I, I mean, I just, I think we need to be very, very careful.
That's what I'm saying, guys. We don't, we just need to look at this. We're not committing to anything. Just, there's possibilities here where it may help a lot of people. It's all voluntary. So, all right. You ready to move on?
Yes, sir. I was just also going to mention that we had done pre-applications for ARC grants for two projects and have been invited to apply for ARC funds for Alexander County Industrial Park Pump Station Replacement Project. And we had, we're eligible to apply for up to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars in ARC funds. And again, this is just an invitation. It's not an award and does not obligate ARC. As part of that process, you have to go to an ARC grant workshop in late June, June twenty-fourth. And the applications are due July twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. The other one is the broadband feasibility study that we've talked a little bit about. And the same dates for that. Again, it's not, it's just, we've been invited to apply. So that, and that's the parameters. If we spend money before we do the application or do any, take any kind of, it's not eligible to be, we don't, it's not eligible for this grant. We have to wait till the grant is actually awarded, which would be in the fall of this year. So I'll just bring you up to date on those items.
Rick, what was, what if you had private investment that funded the ten thousand dollars or for twenty for the broadband? How does that affect?
If you had, if you had private investment, then we wouldn't, I mean, you talk about not, not getting the ARC grant.
Mm-hmm.
It would be fine.
Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell and myself spent an hour on the phone today on a conference call with the CEO of a fiber optic cable company and a CEO of a engineering company. And we had a very good discussion.
And the basic premise of this is we have a lot of remote areas of the county that does not have internet access. And it's maybe a means to provide that service that, that expense isn't going to be aired by the county. So it sounds like it may have, may be a good idea.
I had, I am not a Facebook junkie, but I do look at Facebook on occasion. And someone, some, somebody had asked, they'd said, we just moved to, and I don't remember what road it was, but it was in rural Alexandria, you know, rural Alexander County. And they were asking, who can we get high-speed internet, who, who can we get high-speed internet through? And most of the reply, most of the comments from, I guess, you know, their friends and people that live in that area was, what's high speed? And HughesNet's the best option, but it's very expensive because that's satellite. You know, and, and it was, you know, and it was just, I mean, you know, one person said, if you needed high speed, you shouldn't have bought so and so, you know. You know, because there are a lot of areas, there are, there are a lot of areas that, you know, that at least to this point, the, you know, cable companies, phone companies haven't, you know, it's not profitable for them to run the line, for them to run the lines.
Well, they have no competition. They don't need to.
Right, you know, and so this, you know, this, if this could be done, if this could be done properly, it would, it would definitely benefit, benefit a lot of people.
Well, the larger companies, you know, they're focusing on the metropolitan area. So that's why this may really, this could be a very, very positive thing, especially if it creates competition which will ultimately drive the price down or at least the chance of driving the price down.
That's all I have. Yes, sir. I have something for closed session, but.
Okay. The consent agenda, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We'll go into closed session per North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point eleven to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, economic development, contractual, and personnel. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
And we'll reconvene just to, for German only. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.